Okay. Good evening. Thank you for indulging us for a little bit of a late start before we get together and comes together for a few minutes and now we're ready to go. So I'll call the meeting to order and declare that we have a quorum.
I'd like to make a motion to excuse Rob Eaton from seeking seating.
A motion and a second to excuse Mr. Eaton. Dr. Alvin?
Yes.
Mr. Gerd?
Yes.
Ms. Lomas?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Henrikus Kimble?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Next is the adoption of the agenda.
So moved?
Second.
A motion and a second, Ms. Henrikus Kimble?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Jennifer Lomas?
Yes.
Mr. Gerd?
Yes.
Dr. Alvin?
Yes.
And I shall vote yes, we have an agenda. Next thing up is 1.4, which is our pledge of allegiance. And I double-checked, our CFO is good at numbers and he does know the pledge of allegiance, so I'm going to ask him to come up and say the pledge of allegiance at his last. Nothing. Our pledge of allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic of America with one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much, sir.
Do we need to give him a shirt certificate?
Uh, we'll, we'll give him something on that. Next up is report a closed session and we did meet in closed session on May 9th and June 6th of 2024 for a discussion of personnel agenda items. Next thing is public comments and we have?
Um, Ms. Nicholson?
Hi.
Good evening, come on up.
Good evening. My name's Jacinda, I'm a parent um here in the district and I just wanted to say a couple of things. I wanted to present to you guys an opportunity for our kids to have more field trips. And then also I wanted to say thank you for the continued efforts of safety in our schools. Um, I'm a part of a very large, connected, large family group and I've been visiting many schools this year and we have, I feel like we have some of the safest schools. So I appreciate that, I appreciate.
All the best is yet to come, we're still working on it.
I appreciate that. So, and also I wanted to present a um opportunity for our kids to travel. Um Shaw Nature Reserve, they have a Dana Brown Overnight Center. Initially, I wanted to bring um, ask you all to bring back sixth grade field trips. Um, I feel like the sixth graders have a lot of unused energy. Um, the Dana Bran- Dana Brown Overnight Center at the Shaw Nature Reserve offers um, they offer overnight um stays there for classroom groups. And um, the classes that they have, you take classes when you're there, but they, they're day classes and they would be, it can, they, you could take ecology, art, history, or navigation classes. Um, they would not only, so it is only five dollars per student, but for uh districts that have show a financial um need, which would be considered because we are a free lunch district. They will not only provide a scholarship for us to come there, but they provide transportation as well as um overnight fees are waived for one lead teacher as well as one adult chaperone per 10 students. So they will waive the fees. Um, when I was speaking initially to Jennifer, we had mentioned about collecting maybe the five dollars per student and then allowing the students who couldn't pay to use the scholarship. That would also allow us to generate funding as well. Um, they allow up to 60 students per, so I don't know how that would work, how we would run that out, but they do this all year round, depending on the year is um, depending on what season is, is how they use the outdoor classroom. But every, the overnight accommodations is indoors. Uh, what this would look like is you would arrive um around nine or 10 a.m. They have a morning class, a lunch, then an afternoon class, they would have free time for the teacher, then dinner, then free time for the teachers again. And then a self-guided or teacher-led activity, so they ask that you have a light lesson plan. Um, then you would get ready for bed, lights out, that's like a 10, then you wake up, pack your luggage, they ask, they do ask the kids to clean up a little bit. Breakfast, morning class, free teacher time, lunch, clean the uh, and then reflection, and then they depart. Um, they also offer classes for grades four to eight and those classes is called the Maple Syrup Program. That program, they also will offer us a scholarship to send our students there, but that is a two-hour program, but busing would be included.
So is, is that liar?
You can have all this, you can have all this and I've already, I've already, yes, and I've already contacted the contact person at the end of it and um gave them some of our basic information and they said they'd be happy to have us. Um, so I don't know how that would work as far as the 60 students is capacity and running our students through that, or maybe our sixth graders, but maybe we can have, I don't know how big our class is. And then I also wanted to say, um, my daughter's a cheerleader, varsity cheerleader. Our student got the um, they've been in competition all week at Granite City High School and one of our students got the scholarship for um, the upcoming, one of our, I think it was Ayana Hunt. She received a cheer scholarship from the competition to, for her schooling this year.
Oh, that's great.
And actually, Rittner has won that twice in a row, so, out of four, four different high schools that are there.
So your daughter is a senior?
Yes, my daughter is a junior going into senior year. I know, nobody writes us, I know.
That is awesome, they take, they take cheerleading just to.
They work hard.
Crazy level.
I know, I never thought that in high school, I'm like cheerleaders. Thank you.
I would like to say, I want to say thank you for bringing this to the board and um bringing ideas to it. So encourage your other moms or dads or other families to, you know, when they see things like that, to bring them either to the schools or to us and everything, because that's great for us to find these programs are up.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
That's awesome. All right, President's Report. I am, I am not only proud but very happy to report that Rittner's High School 106 graduating class walked across the stage to get their diplomas June 1st at the Shakers Arena on the campus of St. Louis University. Written a high school class 2024, including 418 graduates, which is, I heard someone say, the largest class in about 18 years, 20 years? Not bad, right? Two students graduated with, with both their high school diploma and an associate's degree from St. Louis Community College. Quite an achievement there, a record 23 of our graduates earned the seal of fine literacy for proficiency in a foreign language. And the class of 2024, yeah, I'm glad you're sitting down for this one, earned more than $10 million in scholarships. $10 million. That'll, that'll get you in some classes, won't it? We're proud of these kids, we're proud of all these amazing high school graduates and wish them all the best in the future endeavors, whichever way it takes them, we're proud of our students, no matter where they go and what they do. And just, we're talking about students, let me tell you about a student. She graduated this, this spring with her associates. Not only did she graduate, but her and her husband graduated, right? Now, who am I talking about, I didn't say her name. The Board Secretary, Dequinda, right? Isn't that awesome? And just to put a little bit more on top, it was her 15th wedding anniversary. One more thing, you said what she's going to do next, right? I got that. She plans to attend St. Louis University and pursue, guess what, a bachelor's degree in education. Okay? Oh, he is? About 10 years from now, we'll have two teachers, two graduates looking at when they can take their master's degree to. Look at that. Okay, last thing I have is Mr. Fortuna Kanama with Connect. We, he, come on up, Fortuna. We, we could not see his video during his presentation last week and I thought, oh, that's, that's kind of an integral part of his presentation and everything he was talking about, so we want to revisit that. And uh, I was, I was told that we have the
The video works?
The video ready to go? So, Ford's here, sir.
Can you skip ahead to the video?
Yep.
Fortuna, can you tell us who's with you this week?
So this is Brandon, he's class of 22 as well, he's a, he's a guy who beat me up for valedictorian.
Won't forget that very soon.
Hi, Brandon. Um, I go to Umsul and I'm studying engineering, electrical engineering.
Welcome. Yeah, so before we play the video, I decide, so I'm a tutor for a high school as well and one thing we have is that I'm only one person. So the goal of this is to provide a software where students can get tutoring 24/7, like a Zoom call. Currently we're delivering AI images that can be like someone you know, there's a few people we don't hear, and be able to answer any topic, it's currently intended for languages. And it can answer any subject from writing, math, and it will work when there's like more complex stuff, it can also give sense advice, like we have someone explain what a Roth IRA is and I'll let the video play for itself.
Dev Education is a platform that provides 24/7 academic support for students in any subject. Here an overview of what we'll cover in the DevEd demo today.
Hey, Dev, how was your day coming?
Got Isaac Newton, saw an apple.
So just since we closed a question and then we use our vast database that we have, tons of software, we've used a lot of the tutoring software.
Hey, Dr. Green, how do I solve this problem?
So if you listen closely, guys, my voice will be changed the pitch just a little bit for safety reasons, but you can have almost any voice you want, if we have a 10-second clip, we have the voice, just like that, we can get 3D scans because those aren't really available. But if you have a single picture of someone, they're able to help you tutor, so if someone wants their parents to tutor, it can help in any software.
Next one will be facial expression.
So oftentimes distractions are a big part of it, a big part of it, so this software is also able to connect the students off images they have, so it gives the students, I've said, hey, I'm interested in F1, because we three things are happening at F1 this year. And once I put one of those things, we can go deeper, make a touch check to my attention back. But then also for safety reasons, the background has been learned, this is the same facial recognition software we use for Debbie, except this time the facial stuff is been disabled, but in your room if you have access to background, like, hey, I have that poster, let's talk to you soon about that poster. Next up is some of our writing problems, they would say, okay, I'm saying how I wanted to sound and giving you suggestions on how to do that, so this is the before and after, and it tells me why they do suggestions to help me over time, so I can put another writer's squad. So this will be just like the same goal. Hey, next up is a familiar face, again. In terms of, in terms of first barrier level and how it works.
The Roth IRA is like a special piggy bank where you save your allowance. When you put your money in this piggy bank, it grows bigger over time because of magic called interest. The best part is, when you're older and want to use the money, you don't have to give any of it to the taxman. It's a way to save money for the future without paying extra when you finally use it.
And then at the end, currently it's intended for languages and we can handle about 5% of our students today for 24/7 support. The goal is in two years, we'll be able to host this and give it to our students to help them all just try, try to give us like competitive edge in the ones that have. Any questions?
That's impressive.
So what did you say, we got, have access to me?
Two years the district will have access to us, the goal is to cut down on how much respect you want two years now, then Emily can go towards other places. We provide us their district right now. In two years, we'll also be able to do a live demo, so you will be able to ask your questions and we'll stop with the like, when it's not talking about what we need. So the goal is to just always keep moving forward.
That's great, thank you so much for bringing that up this week, thank you.
This is great work, thank you so much, Fortuna.
And all those things complete my report. Next up is the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Dr. Thomas, so uh, Al Isaiah Smith, welcome back, uh, just completed her mission trip to uh, was it Central or South America, Al Isaiah?
It was Central.
To Central America, glad you're back with us and appreciate your commitment to uh, making the world a better place for people. Uh, so would also like to recognize another one of our new administrators who is here with us tonight, board members, you've met a couple of new administrators. We have Mr. uh, actually, Dr. Declan Fitzpatrick, one of the new assistant principals of Rittner High School here with us, so Declan, please come up and uh, and introduce yourself to the board, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Members of the board, Dr. McBride. Uh, thank you for this opportunity to introduce myself to you, uh, my name is Declan Fitzpatrick. Um, I have been in education for 30 years. Um, just this year I completed my 30th year, also this year I completed my doctorate in education at Maryville University. Um, and earlier this year I earned my admin, administrative certificate and my superintendent's license um, at the same time. So I began my career in 1994 as a high school English teacher. Um, and I was asked this evening to introduce a little bit about my um, beliefs in education and my, my background and my initial impressions of the Rittner School District, so. Um, I, in my 30 years in education, I have come to believe that there's no more important school factor than a teacher's belief about their students. That um, when a teacher sees a student as a unique gift, as a person who is specially designed for a purpose in life, they see every interaction with that student as an opportunity to discover, to enhance and to unleash the student's strengths and interests. And they see every interaction as an opportunity to learn more about what that student needs to become their most fulfilled self. When teachers do that, it makes a remarkable impact. As an administrator, when we support teachers to solve problems, when we make every day a little bit easier for teachers, we make it easier for them to show up for their students and be fully present for their students. We make it easier for them to do the hard work of matching the skills and content in the curriculum to the student's strengths and interests. Um, so that learning can be a joyful experience for everybody, every day in school. Um, when, when schools can be a place of joy like that, it makes doing the hard work of learning easier for everybody. Um, last week I had the opportunity to see the Rittner School District enact its values, last month, sorry, the last week of May, I, I um, got to attend the competency-based learning summit. And I saw the teachers and the coaches and the administrators there really put their values into action. Uh, bringing people together from all across the country to pool their talents and their resources and their expertise to build systems that make it easier to do that hard work of matching students to the skills and content in curriculum. And helping them leverage their strengths and interests to become the expert in the things that are going to fuel their careers and their calling for the rest of their lives. Uh, Rittner seems to be a place that judiciously uses its resources to ensure that every student has good information about where they're headed, about where they are now, and the skills that they're going to need to close the gap uh, to achieve their goals. Um, I got to see an educational community bring people together from all across the country in service of that goal of making the hard work of doing school easier for all students. I'm profoundly grateful for the opportunity to join the school district and I really want to have the opportunity to put my talents and strengths to work to solve problems for teachers every day, so they can show up fully for their students. Thank you.
So Declan, thank you for being here, board members, uh, when Declan said that he was able to attend the conference, he was being a little bit modest. Uh, Declan is uh, one of the leads around Connected Learning, a group of collaborative educators here in the St. Louis area. Uh, Declan played a significant role in the organization of the conference and the registration of the conference and all of the setup along with Ms. Gilliam and, and Dr. Nobiel and Dr. Mako. Uh, so Declan, thank you for all your work as you're coming to the district, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And then board members, finally in my report, um, there was a presentation about market value assets and uh, some work that was done with one of our contractors and all the construction uh that's going on in the district. And so um, there is going to be a presentation that's coming up at a later time to share some progress on that front. Uh, but here with us tonight, uh, we've got partners from uh, CCDI, the Construction Career Development Initiative. Uh, a, a number of uh, Rittner alums as well as some of the leaders of the initiative, would invite them all up uh, to, to the table to talk a little bit about CCDI.
We're following a standard. Well, welcome, yeah, thank you, um, thank you for having us, my name is Rachel Boner, I'm the program director for CCDI and I'll, we'll just go around the room and we're, we should have a few moments to talk to and we will explain our program and how we got involved in Rittner and um, they get to tell you their success stories.
Um, hi guys, I'm Carolyn Holden Dean, I was a 2020 graduate at Burnham High School and right now I currently go to Mizzou and I majored in social management. Are we going to wait for this slide?
Yeah. We'll just do introductions for now.
How you doing, I'm Dominic Galen, I graduated last year, I'm 2021, I'm currently a carpenter, I work for TJ Weeks.
Good evening, boy, my name is Caleb Williams, I currently work in Emerson Electric, I'm in school for electronics engineering, I'm a class of 22 graduate.
And I'm Debbie Thomas, I'm a board member of CCDI and I um, have been involved since about 2015.
Yep, so we um, got involved with the district after the Michael Brown incident, we give you guys all a little bit of a pamphlet that explains our program, we're light reading for later if you'd like to look at it. Um, we actually want to show you a video that will give you a better overview of how we work with all different North County schools, Rittner's one of our first partnerships, which Debbie will get to speak on a little bit, Mark, she was the one that helped get our program into the Rittner School District. We are affiliated with CLACO, uh, which is right down the street in Oberlin, um, it was an initiative, this nonprofit was an initiative that came out of the unrest in Ferguson. CLACO at the time was building with Centene and said, we want to do more in the community than just throw money um, at a donation effort. Uh, and I think the people who originally got involved, Debbie being one of them, never thought it was going to turn into a nonprofit that is now going to be celebrating our 10-year anniversary soon. Um, and the fact that we've helped touch hundreds, thousands of students at this point, get a little bit more exposure to careers in construction, whether that's degree pathways or trade, uh, trades pathways. Um, but yes, Rittner's been one of our strongest partners from the get-go, so these are some fantastic students behind me, we've been really lucky to have them in our program and I think the sweet sauce of our program now is the alumni that have come back to speak to the students and teach them. Today, we actually just had a field trip at CLACO's new office in Berkeley and brought students from all different um, schools in North County. They got to tour the construction site, they got to speak to alumni, um, some who are working on the project, some who are in college, she's actually entering with CLACO this summer too. So it's, it's really cool to see the program come full circle. If you want to flip to the next slide, this video, it's, it's a five-minute video, but um, it's, it's really cool, so I want to play it.
CCDI came into our school in 2015 after the Michael Brown incident.
Protesters of different ages and races demanding answers in the shooting of the 18-year-old Michael Brown at the hands of a policeman.
What you're looking at is the aftermath.
During that time, there was a lot of financial issues, there was a lot of stuff going on in the area, CCDI said, we need to do something to help the area grow and be better. CCDI, Construction Career Development Initiative, the training is apprenticeships, financial training, partnerships with companies that help get our kids ready for the work industry.
The Construction Career Development Initiative, or CCDI, brings diversity to the designing construction industry by mentoring and exposing underworking, underrepresented, and underemployed men and women to career development in construction.
When I started, I was the only kid who could, I wanted to be able to provide for my mom, because at the time we were both like homeless and you know, she was just getting up with cancer, so they presented me with an opportunity, said, well, why don't we put you through college if you work with us?
CCDI really helped groom me into the man I am today, as far as helping me get that job placement and being able to see how the trades actually work and then also notice how much diversity we needed in the trade.
Studies reveal occurring demand for over 650,000 skilled tradespeople in construction, yet some groups remain underutilized. CCDI takes a strategic approach, targeting historically underrecognized young adults as viable candidates to meet this growing demand.
I think it's important to have more diversity in the industry because it brings out more culture and everything to the industry and particularly women. I think we more particular about our work. If they want more good work, hire more women.
Part of it that we do with our graduates.
I think it's very important for people, I mean, come back to CCDI and just, so we can get more kids into the trade.
It's an insane situation and environment that I was in growing up, so if I personally would have seen more people like myself coming back and showing me, okay, this is possible, I probably wouldn't have did a lot of the things that I did.
I love the guys that come to CCDI, I love that when you come to the different meetings, there's a mom there and they were just in a position not so long ago, when they come back, they get back to the community.
They can see themselves in each student that comes back, whether they're electrician, a plumber, or anything. So I think that's the biggest thing, is having results on top of being able to have representation.
CCDI has opened the doors for thousands of students, unveiling a variety of career options within the industry. Beyond exposure, we've played a pivotal role in securing full-time employment for hundreds of students and young adults in trades careers. Additionally, we empower them to pursue higher education through scholarships while ensuring access to reliable transportation and professional-grade tools, dismantling barriers that hindered success.
Towards my senior year, I ended up getting an opportunity to intern at CLACO as a project manager in quality control, they also gave me a scholarship for construction management. And now I'm one of three indie paint companies in St. Louis, Missouri.
Now like, I've heard like kids are like, college is paid for, classes are, but they're able to help in transportation if you don't have a car, they'll help you get a car, help you get a loan.
For the build our future scholarships, I didn't think college is a option, if I didn't fill out for that scholarship, I don't know where I'd be at, for real.
I feel like CCDI, they have a way for like, this is your destination, here's the vehicle on how we can get you there. And that's the biggest thing, because when you know, okay, I, this is where I want to be and this is how I get there, it's great.
I don't want to do car chase, I want to do longhouse and that. My future goal is definitely to become a carpenter right now, but I also have the backup plan to become an electrician. CCDI's program, it really cares about you, a lot of benefits you can get from it.
Even if it's not work-wise as a person, if I have some personal going on, like, they're there for you and they're genuinely good people.
I think it's important for CCDI to exist because I didn't know anything about construction.
So I feel like it's great just being able to give kids opportunities to change their life around.
And I think it's important that you do catch them at high school and middle school to get them to join the union or at least have them think about it.
I'm seeing stuff that most people really don't see before they get into the trade, but I'm really seeing what it's like.
I'm a tech grad myself, not having these opportunities in front of me, I want these kids to have what I didn't have, that's the reason why we do it.
So the video isn't normally shaky like that? You can go to the next slide. There you go. Um, you go actually one more slide over. Yeah, one more slide over. One more slide over. There we go. Showing up a little differently, alright, so um, we're going to actually, you, you can go ahead and start if you want to talk about your experience.
Hello guys, again, um, so I'm the third uh, slide or that third picture, so like I said, I was a 2020 recipient, so middle of the pandemic was, was a lot, but without CCDI, I really don't think I would have been able to.
But without CCDI, I really don't think I would have been able to go to college. So for that, I'm eternally grateful. And last year, I was actually in Georgia. I was in Atlanta on a job site during the project engineering internship. So that's just when you're fully submerged in the field and you're, you work under the project managers. So you learn everything about construction on the, on the job site. And right now, I currently intern with CLACO's design engineering team, with their structural team, which is what I wanted to do with my civil engineering degree. And yeah, I work just down the street in office. And yeah, I really love CCDI, so.
You're graduating.
Uh, next month. Next month.
And she will be our sixth college graduate who will go into career choice science. So it's pretty awesome.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Your turn. Thelma, your next.
So I've, I've been involved with a lot of different things and a lot of different, I'm sorry, my different buildings that have been built around here. I've done work at the Armory. I've done work at the Chicken and Phil's out there in St. Charles. I've actually done work in the Duke School. I've done work in different school districts. I'm currently working at North Little School right now. I've done a lot of, a lot of involvement with different areas. I also worked out in Illinois a couple of times. I really love what I do. It's very, very fun and challenging at the same time. It can be hard work, it can be hard environment, especially being outside in hot humid weather. It could definitely be, be hard, but it's still fun and still challenging. I wouldn't, I wouldn't start nothing else or do anything else outside of what I do. It's, I like being able to work with different people and work with new people and come together as one and we accomplish the same goal. I like to be able to just work better with like skills, soft skills and everything. Like to be able to be helpful and communicate better with others. It's, it's real fun. And I enjoy it every day. There's not a single day where I don't wake up and look forward to not going to work or not working. And I just, I really like to do different things. And there's always a mixture of what I'm doing, too. I don't just do one thing every day, even day in, day out. It's always something new. And there's multiple different challenges you'll face on the job, different problems. You have to come together as a group and a team to figure out it's all different, it's all different things. I would say I love the opportunity I was given. I was one of the first kids out of Rittner to do the CCDI program back in 2017 is when I joined. I did love, I did love going to the program. I never missed a meeting, always showed up. I, I do love giving back. They gave so much to me and I appreciate it.
Which helped get you what?
Well, helped give me the car, yes.
That's also caused him a lot of problems. We're working on saving up to get another car.
Yeah, I definitely, I love CCDI. And I wouldn't, I wouldn't turn my back on them. They never turn their back on me. And I always love giving back and helping out.
And you will be journeying out in about two years, a year?
About a year. So I'm sixth term right now. So I'll be seventh term anytime I go back to school. Then about a year and a half or so.
He'll be a journeyman carpenter.
Oh, wow. All right.
Good evening once again. I would say CCDI has been a big part of, in my life because during the pandemic, I honestly only had one full year of high school. And during that time, it's been really unmotivated to either go to college. But being in NorTech and joining CCDI and seeing what are the other options outside of going straight to college, and going on these field trips to different construction sites, learning that it's more to just being a carpenter or electrician or, you know, anything else. It's, it's, I'm just glad I was able to see more than what was, was normally thrown in our faces going straight to school or my initial plan was going to the military. But what I didn't know was having peanut allergy and asthma. But, uh.
Oh, yeah.
It was tough, but, um, like the video said, it's not even just about CCDI helping you get career-ready and getting that job. But it's also important that they, they're there for you with a personal problem. Because I know I was going through some personal things. Like I said, with not being able to join the military, if that being my first option, I kind of felt stuck. But talking to Rachel and my other instructors, we sat down. We made a plan together and also had another issue going on. Rachel was there to really help me get through that. Even still now, we, we talk in whatever projects.
Tell me your plan. You're at Emerson and what's your next plan?
Well, right now, so I'm at Emerson Electric right now. But now, with me being in school for electronics engineering, I plan to be, become a system tester, wherever that may be, or, or a tech to where I come out and, you know, figure out that problem. But I'm also, we're talking about other pathways. I mean, becoming an electrician, waiting on the union or just seeing what else is out there, few options.
So we had some, we had some other students that weren't able to make it that are part of the Rittner School District. Actually, I realized on the video, Michael Beckworth is also a part of Rittner, who he's interning at CLACO this summer as a high school intern. I forgot to add him to this slide. But we also recently just gave a scholarship to Eric Reques. He's one of our 2024, both our future scholars. The Chancellor of UMSL actually awarded his scholarship at our scholarship award ceremony a couple of weeks ago. So that was really neat. Geraldine Flores is an amazing story, which Debbie can touch on because that was her mentee. And Devin Sanders, he's another one of our scholars. He's at Missouri S&amp;T, majoring in mechanical engineering. I'll just touch on Geraldine real quick because I'm so proud of her. She's graduated, she graduated from Rankin and she's working full-time at LJC, which is the architecture firm within CLACO. And she recently was accepted into Wash U. She's our first student who's working on a dual master's degree in architecture and construction management. And she's doing phenomenal. She gives back to the program all the time, too, speaks to the students, comes to events, which is really neat to see all of these kids talking to the next generation who are interested in all these different pathways. Because construction has a plethora of different ways you can go. And like Caleb was saying, sometimes we get stuck at getting into union apprenticeships and the road kind of closes there, which is tough. But I feel like I kind of call myself the construction counselor. So if that's not working, we'll beat up their door a little bit harder or figure out something else that may work in the meantime. So we're really privileged to be a part of your district, too. I think Rittner has opened its doors very, very welcomingly. So has Pattonville and some of the other schools, too. And I think that's a big testament to education. I think there's always some hesitancies of having industry come into the classroom. But I think that's really enhanced some of the students' experience, getting to know what CLACO is. So when they drive past, they, they realize like, I've been to that company. We, we take the students on Saturdays, two different projects. They get to see projects while they're being built. They get to learn about general contractors. They get to learn about subcontractors. So they have an idea of what company they want to work for once they graduate. So we'll give Debbie the floor before our 10 minutes is probably already up.
Okay. So I'll just be really quick, but just to say, this, this is why I love being involved. I mean, you've heard them all talk. They love the program. And as Rachel alluded to, I mean, we have the alumni who come back to give back, to, you know, you know, give the knowledge and, and everything and encourage the students who are coming up. I got involved in 2015, 2016. As you see, I, many of you know, I am, I am a Rittner district community member. I recently graduated from Rittner. And when the opportunity came up, they said, you know, we're, we want to get with North County schools and see what we can do as far as partnerships and everything. I'm like, I'm all in on Rittner. Let's, you know, we have great students and, you know, they have great programs, you know? So I was, the first, when we first started out by going to, I think, a couple of education fairs that you had. I mean, it's been since 2015 before you had them, but like the college fairs. We came into a couple of those and started getting students interested then. Then we came in and we did just some, put some stuff within the school, within the engineering program a couple of times. So, and that's how we got started. We started to work in scholarships and getting to know the students then. Geraldine was a 2019 graduate from Rittner and 2023 graduate, our first Rankin bachelor graduate in architecture. It's their only four-year program. She graduated there. She applied to Wash U and she got accepted. Now she's going to be attending Wash U this fall, as Rachel said. And it's, it's really amazing. She's, she's a wonderful testament to, to the Rittner High School students.
Debbie's not giving herself credit. The reason she's probably working at CLACO, too, is because of Debbie's influence and being a mentor. She brought her in early and, you know, talked to her through college and was a big support, you know, talked to her family, was staying involved with her mom, picked her up for things, made sure she attended stuff. So that's a big part of our program, too, is mentorship and matching them with an industry person. Like Debbie's in the finance part of it. She's not even in architecture, but just exposing Geraldine to those opportunities. She found out what her niche was. And, I mean, it really does show that early exposure can change the trajectory of a student's outcome, for sure. She's the first-generation college student in her family, too.
Yeah.
So, very cool.
Very exciting.
Amazing program. Thank you for all you're doing for Rittner kids and Rittner alums. Looking forward to having you back to influence the next generation of Huskies to get them into the program. Thank you all for being here.
Pretty good reports going on there, isn't it? Next report is, is the first report from our new student representative, Ms. Alizena Smith.
So I have no report.
Okay.
Yeah?
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Moving on to the MSBA, NSBA report.
Yeah, so before we watch the video, they, and this, the video talks about this, just the end of session and the low, historically low number of bills that were passed. And I think in some cases, that was actually, that was for the best. And it was also a record number of bills that were filed initially. And just wanted to share with the board about this kind of workshop we're trying to put together, get together for an advocacy, sort of one-on-one for the community. And it's not just for the Rittner community, but it's for districts, all of our partnering districts. But actually, as I was talking to a fellow board member from another district, they are the ones who said, how can we, how can we open this up to even, you know, maybe not this iteration, but make it some sort of virtual or we take it on the road to different rural communities to also partner in advocacy and have us be even stronger this next session? So, and I did want to quote in the business financial report here because I thought it just correlated really well with this whole idea and priority of really centering advocacy and preparing our community to be advocates. It said, "The current climate to provide public education is difficult. Because public education funding comprises a large portion of the state budget, education becomes an easy target for politicians, lobbyists, and others who covet those resources for other means. For the most part, people feel connected to education based upon their personal experiences and have difficulties understanding the complexities of the educational process." And I totally agree with that. And I think that's why this type of workshop or bringing together of advocates would be so impactful. Because we all feel education, whether, whatever, in whatever way, right? And so just wanted to bring that to the board. I think we're thinking August 24th date for that. We have the facilitator from Missouri Foundation for Health. I was able to confirm her. She's wonderful. And we'll do this sort of first workshop. And then we'll just see how it goes. We'll see what the community wants and just be responsive to what people want next. But I'm excited about it. I hope you're excited about it. And we'll invite all of your friends, everybody, because this is, again, not just for community members, but teachers and admin and people who work here and live here and care about our students. And how can we, again, show up? And again, you'll hear it in the video where they say legislators want to hear from their communities. They want to hear from people. And I know that we have, we're so grateful for our amazing representatives that we have. But we also know that there's, they're part of larger committees, right? That we also need to bring our voice to. So, now it's kind of long-winded. But just wanted to give that sort of explanation. And then, again, just put that date out there so we can save the date. Okay. Play the video.
Welcome to the June edition of the Missouri School Boards Association's Board Report. We begin with a look back at the legislative session that wrapped up last month. Education issues dominated headlines and talking points throughout this year's session. MSBA's Director of Outreach, Caitlin Whaley, says that this year's session was unusual from start to finish.
The 2024 legislative session was a bit odd, I think, to kind of sum it up. We started off with a lot of, a lot of bills. A historic number of bills filed, thousands of bills. And both in the education realm and just overall, it became clear semi-early on that the number of bills actually passed was going to be very few. So specific to education, you saw that narrow down to Senate Bill 727 extremely quickly. And that became almost the entire focus of all the major education groups, was what was and was not in 727. And overall, just very few bills passed. I think, including the budget, it was like 49 bills, which is exceptionally low when you're starting from 5,000.
Caitlin says that with the passage of Senate Bill 727, there are now more issues that school board members will need to be aware of going into the next budget year and legislative session.
And we will be continuing to put out both policy and general guidance on what 727 means in practice and practicality. A lot of what is in 727 is budget-related. And so that is going to be a fight for next year, is to fight that you need to fund all of these additional mandates that we put on school districts, the, the teacher salary increases. And you can't fund them at the expense of things like the foundation formula and transportation. We have to have that overall net increase in funding to keep it from being a huge local tax increase on our school districts.
And although the session is over, Caitlin says it's still important for board members and administrators to stay in touch with legislators and also noted the outstanding outreach efforts of school board members this past session.
I'm, I'm new to MSBA, but I was absolutely floored by the outpouring of support and enthusiasm for advocating on these issues. We had so many board members and districts step up and voice their opinions and concerns, do, you know, do that outreach that we were asking of them. Because I know Brandt will say it and I will say it and Mike will say it. Legislators want to hear from people in their districts. And it's much more meaningful for them to have a conversation with somebody that lives in their area and represents their local school districts than it is for, you know, the MSBA advocacy team in Jefferson City. So your work was absolutely noticed. We got feedback from the governor's office. They were very impressed by the amount of outreach that they received. And so every time we conduct that outreach, we're laying groundwork that school board members are a trusted voice and a trusted advocate in public education. And we can continue to build that up as a resource going forward.
MSBA's positions on state and federal education issues are determined by the delegate assembly that will be meeting this coming October. If your school board has a position statement on an issue you would like to submit to the advocacy committee for consideration,
Then also, as a part of experiencing a smaller rural college, there's also a field trip up to Eureka College in Eureka, Illinois, where they meet with the college president, get to see a little bit about what would a small college campus look like. Recommending financial support in the amount of $70,000. This is all ESIR funding. Board members, this would be the last time this recommendation is being made because we are, there's a component of ESIR funds that has expanded summer programming, and that's exactly what this fits. In the future, there will be a recommendation in years to come for continued support of the AIM High program, but not to this amount that we've pledged over the last couple of years. The funding for the program is built into the 24-25 budget, and it supports the continued growth of the program and the expected expansion of the number of Rittner students that will be served. In the future, in working with our incoming CFO, Phil Pousatieri, we'll make decisions about future funding of AIM High, of what the district could tolerate. We'll be in the neighborhood, the expected neighborhood of $20,000 would be our future recommendation. Can you answer any questions?
Is there any way to reach out to like Pride and Promise? To help like fund that in the years to come? Because it is such a wonderful program. I'm assuming with 70,000, that's like a certain number of students. If it's only 20,000, that means there's going to be fewer students that probably won't be able to go?
So actually, the interesting piece is it is not directly connected. There is not a tuition per student. So we are able to support because we're expanding the number of students that are being served, but there is not a one-to-one, it's not a $900 cost. There is a philanthropic arm of AIM High. They target groups like the Enterprise Foundation, the Taylor Family Foundation, to supplement their funding. And Pride and Promise, reaching out to them could be potentially a good idea.
Okay, there's no other questions, we will throw a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the funding for the AIM High program for the amount of $70,000 for the 2024 year using ESIR funds.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. If there are no other questions or comments, we will call a vote. Dr. Al, yes?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Ms. Lowes?
Yes.
Ms. Leverjones?
Yes.
Ms. Sinterekis-Pip?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes.
Thank you, board members.
Okay, next thing up, we want to talk about 3.2, which is our meal prices.
That's right. Good evening, how are you doing this evening?
Good evening.
So I'm here to get approval for the meal price recommendation for the food and nutrition program. And I wanted to talk about, we go with the vision, the mission. Our equity statement is a commitment to building positive, purposeful relationships with everyone, every student, every family, so that their barriers and high levels of our room are removed. Providing a well-balanced meal for students is fuel for student learning, and that can help them learn in that way. So I'd like to talk about the 24-25 meal price recommendation, how we analyze it. It's, we do the current meal cost and the current meal price. Currently, for the 23-24 school year, the adult price for breakfast was $2.50, and then the adult lunch was $4.15. So the total raw meal cost for the next coming, upcoming school year, for the 24-25 school year, the breakfast meal actually costs us $2.50, and then the lunch meal actually costs us $4.11. So right now, the current adult meal price, again, is $2.50, and then we charge $4.15 right now as a cost. For the recommended price, we would like to ask for $2.75 and then $4.40 for lunch. So the reason I'm recommending for the 24-25 school year for breakfast to be $2.75 and lunch to be $4.40, so it's due to the DESI recommendations that we need to charge $2.75 and $4.40 for all adults. And that's because our student, our student meals, we get that regardless. And so, any questions? No?
Yep.
Okay, with this presented, there's a motion that goes along with this?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the adult meal prices of $2.75 for breakfast and $4.40 for lunch for the 2024-2025 school year.
Second?
Ms. Sinterekis-Pip?
Yes.
Ms. Leverjones?
Yes.
Ms. Lowes?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Dr. Al?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'll vote yes.
Okay. Now I'm going to go into the child nutrition, the bid recommendations that I had to go through for the 24-25 school year. So when I go to analyze the bids, we send out for dry foods, frozen foods, general supplies, fresh produce, milk, juice, bread, and pizza. And the vendor list is usually Cole Wholesale, U.S. Foods, Graves, Prairie Farms, Green Oak Bakery, and then Jackson Produce, USA Jackson, and then Bucaro and CNC, and then Pizza Hut, Domino's, and Papa John's. The shirts will be added to the mix. How we do this is we select items that we wanted out, and put on menus and things like that. And then we select specifications for bread and milk and juice, and all of our frozen food, dry food, fresh produce, and general supply items. And then we figure out the estimated usage, and it could be higher or lower depending on how Rittner does the menus. So that's how we do our projected usage. And then we select the delivery locations, days, and times, and then we select, we just send it out electronically, and then that's when the vendor did. There was about 232 dry food items. There was about 197 frozen food items and about 55 general supply items. So when we do our frozen and dried general foods, we awarded it by line items, so we never, which every vendor is cheaper. So we did the frozen foods for Cole Wholesale. So we did Cole Wholesale at a thousand, a million, $68,734,000. That's for frozen, drying, and general supplies. And then Graves, same, but they didn't have any general supplies, so it was $354,883. Produce is very expensive, but Jackson, as you see, is the lowest, at $254,941,000.
$254,941,000, right?
Yes, yes, those are, I'm sorry. And then milk and juice. You see that Cole is like substantially lower, but they don't, they only deliver to the warehouse, and they do not deliver fresh juice. They just deliver frozen juice, and so, and it's only once a week. And we need delivery every day because we don't have a lot of refrigeration at schools and stuff like that. And plus Prairie Farms is another one. So that's why I do. Bread selection is awarded by the vendor, and Jackson Supply is a little more expensive on that end too, but they will deliver twice a week to us, and it'll be more fresh bread versus a frozen bread or bread delivered just once a week.
And I like that they go to each individual school?
Yes, individual school.
Yep.
Pizza selection, I awarded by the vendor, and I'd actually like to do all three of them, but Papa John's was the cheapest, and so that's another one that we're trying out. So hopefully they do Papa John's, Pizza Hut, Domino's, and just the prices. So my recommendations are going to be Cole Wholesale for the million, $68,734, Graves at $354,893, Jackson Supply for produce and bread at their prices, and then Prairie Farms, and then we'll do all three pizza deliveries for 3.2. This is just a comparison of how it's been the last three years. And you see it goes up and down, but it's just because vendors charge different pricing and stuff like that. So that's our bids. Questions?
Oh, the produce really has gone up when you compare it to the year before.
Oh, tons, lots, it's extremely a lot. But I can tell you that we probably won't end up spending that much because through the entitlement dollars, we put produce towards that too. So we get produce in CNC from the state, so. Any questions?
I just was curious, how has it been going with the a la carte options at a high school?
We'll talk about that later. So it's still okay. We've just had a few handful of people getting the extra entrees, but it's been going okay.
So, board members, as we talked about a la carte, with this being a pilot year at the high school, we would see what we would learn, and then we'll come back to you to talk about how we could potentially expand to the middle schools.
I'd like to make a motion to approve bids from vendors totaling $2,222,222 for food and general supplies to provide school meals for the 2024-2025 school year.
Second?
Any thoughts or questions hearing that? Call a vote? Ms. Lowes?
Yes.
Ms. Leverjones?
Yes.
Ms. Sinterekis-Pip? All right, on there?
I know, I don't even know, I just breathe wrong. Yes.
Dr. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
I'll vote yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your work.
That could be the luckiest like bid number ever. All the two, so next year, I feel like it's our lucky year.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Moving on. 3.3 is our adult education literacy update. Ms. Karen, you sit.
Thank you so much for this opportunity to come and talk about our program.
The right arrow.
The right arrow.
On the other side.
Other side?
There you go.
There we go. Oh, slides a little, something happened. But we work very hard in the adult education program to make sure that we are in line with the vision and the mission of the Rittner School District. The equity statement, I think, is something that we're really going to be focused on more than ever in the upcoming year as our English language development population continues to grow. We want to make sure that we are making every student feel comfortable and providing all the same opportunities despite the language barriers that they have entering our program. So this summer, I do have some ideas and ways we're going to restructure. The population of our English language program was about 25% of our entire population in previous years. This year, I don't have all the data yet, but I think we're up to about 56% of our population is English language learners, which is great news, it's wonderful. The word is out in the community that we provide this English language program, but we were surprised by the numbers. And it, although it creates, it's an honor, and it's created opportunity for us to reach families in a positive way. It's also created some challenges. So I'm going to be working with Julie Hahn. I'm coming up with some ideas on how we can restructure things so that we are truly meeting the needs of every student that comes our way. Our 2023 DESI report card, it doesn't come in until October, so I'm obviously giving you last year's numbers. We reached the highest academic progression rate we ever had. We got it to 72%. Progression indicates about a two-and-a-half grade level change in a student, and we expect that after about 40 hours. So many of our students continue to progress, but it's that initial progression that DESI kind of keeps an eye on for us. So it was a great progression rate. All of our employment and after-exit and median earnings are above state average, continues to be above state average, and same with our post-secondary enrollment data. We expect similar data this year. We're on track to meet all of those goals and hopefully exceed them. And I will have that data in October. So some of the operations changes that we had this year, we started a partnership with Missouri Learns, which is a completely online learning program. It's offered throughout the entire state of Missouri, but we have a partnership with them where we are actually working with the students alongside the Mal Learns program. And those students have been successful, so we're happy with it. We continue to improve our blended learning model changes and our culture changes for better student outcomes and still focus on wellness for students and staff, yet still, we really, really want to become a very data-driven culture and working on that with teachers, instructors, and students. We want more class time for students. Right now, our classes are two days a week. I would like to go to a four-day-per-week schedule for students, shorter classes but more days. I'm hoping that, you know, the continuum and having, coming to class on a more regular basis will be more effective at creating longevity and commitment with our students. And we definitely want more English language classes, especially in the daytime. We're getting more requests for those now. The vast majority of our English language learners would like to attend evening classes, but we do have a lot of parents that would like to come to class when they drop their kids off to school. So we're definitely adding those classes for next year. And we continue to work on better enrollment practices to encourage student engagement and retention. We did a lot of work with that this year, and some of it went well, some of it we decided not to use, but we have some great ideas. We think that that first initial meeting with our students when they're enrolling, it can be very intimidating because of the requirements that we have to meet in enrollment. Enrollment takes at least two hours, up to four hours, for each individual student, which is a lot of paperwork and a lot of testing, which can be very off-putting for low literacy students. And although I can't change the rules and requirements of DESI, we're trying to build in more things. It just makes it a more comfortable process for our students. And of course, we already had our AEL graduation. Thank you so much for attending the support that our AEL program receives from our Board of Education and our administrative team. As far as I know, it's unmatched in the state of Missouri. And the way it makes the students feel to have you attend and to have a big, excited crowd, it's, it's an amazing experience for them. They leave so happy, so many of them come so reluctant and so nervous. And this Rittner family makes me feel incredibly special and important when they leave. So thank you for doing that.
Thank you, thank you for a very nice graduation. It was very enjoyable to be there, I really enjoyed it.
Thank you for saying that. The biggest thanks goes to our Community Services Department, who not only have to help me, it's like herding cats with our AEL students, but also I'm one of those cats if they have to come to work. Doug, Michelle, that whole team over there, they're just amazing, and they make it great. We should have about 20 graduates by the end of this fiscal year, and I believe 14 people showed up last night, so that was pretty good. Thank you all so much. Goals for 2024. I love AEL students more than any other type of student in the world, but I will say that, you know, 100%, at least on the high set side, were, for most of their academic career, reluctant learners. And keeping them in the program long-term can prove to be challenging. So we continue to work on ways to fast-track. There are many students that can move through our program very quickly, but it's up to us to design something to encourage them to stay because a good portion of our students that enroll with us, I can look at the data and see if this student will just stay really committed for two or three months, they'll be finished. And, and so that's what we are working on. Our students also need access, you know, to remote learning because coming to class, whether it's two days a week or four days a week, not enough study is done, you know, completed in that actual class time. So they need to use our, our learning platforms, and in order to do that, we need to keep increasing their access. We have to continue to focus on staff and student wellness, and we need to create more and better English language learning enrollment opportunities, and as I said earlier, additional English language classes. And I believe that's it. Does anybody have any questions for me?
I do.
Yes.
So on the, so when you were talking about going from two days to four days, do you think some of the challenge there may be like care for kids? So is there, like, do we enlist our A-plus students?
For childcare?
For childcare in the evening?
That is something that has been suggested to me before. Our facility isn't truly set up for childcare, but I will tell you that many of our students do bring their kids with them. And it works, it seems to work out just fine. For students that can't attend because of childcare issues, we offer a virtual option for them with a live teacher that's, you know, instructing throughout the class. So they're not just doing online learning platform. They're truly engaging with a fantastic teacher, and that is how we provide that opportunity. But I think that's something that we can think about a little bit harder. How do we encourage them to come to class? And how do we get their families involved? The other great thing about their families being involved is it's a great opportunity for the kids because many of the, especially the younger kids that need childcare, don't have all the English language proficiency that they need to be successful in school. So they usually participate with their parents, and it's a beautiful, fun, and great opportunity. So if I were to look at A-plus students coming in, I would really like to think about how can we turn it into a family-loving environment? Is that something that sounds appealing?
Absolutely. Anything that encourages, gives them encouragement to be able to come and also to be able to focus while they're there, right?
Exactly.
So, you know, we always want to take care of our kids first and take care of ourselves second, and so that can sometimes be a barrier during the day. And then also thinking for your English language, you know, help as far as staff or people to help with that. Have we looked at anything as far as like students who are in college, going to college, using, like, coming in at night and being able to help teach? You know, like, do, what is it? Where they have to?
Old student teaching?
Yeah, like, yeah, like where they have to spend so many hours in there. So like, I don't know if that's an opportunity too, to reach out to some of, we've got all these connections with colleges as far as sending people to them to get teachers. Can they send us teachers that should do those at that time?
That is wonderful, and I will have to look into that further. When I've thought about that opportunity in the past, unfortunately, because of the way, we're AEL teacher certified, we don't have K-12 certification necessarily. Some of our staff does, not everyone. But it is, that is a great opportunity, and I'm going to revisit that. So thank you for that. We do use a lovely group of Washington University volunteers. Most of them are medical students, but they are very public service-driven, and that program has grown so, so much. We, the first year we did it, I think we had five volunteers from Washington. This last year, we had 25. I almost didn't manage it. Yeah, it was a lot. But they're really, really good, and they do such, they, they know the material so well, but they are there, they're not being paid, they don't get college credit. They are doing it because they believe in it, and they want to be a part of it. And so they've been really wonderful to work with. And we might even think about if bringing in teachers to earn the practice hours, if that's not an opportunity, maybe using our Washington University volunteers in the fashion that you mentioned, that might get another opportunity. Because we need more people. We, I mean, running a classroom with five to 10 English language learners coming in with no English, it was something that we could always manage through language immersion and using Google Translate and things like that. But a larger group presents, again, so much more opportunity, but bigger challenges. So having more people is a great idea.
How many students do you have normally that you serve throughout the year?
Normally throughout the year? So we enrolled 274 students this year. I believe that's, I don't have all the final data. And not all of those students stayed in the program long enough to be considered by DESI's definition students, but, you know, most of them do. And it's a lot. And enrollment itself is something that, you know, we always need more help with.
It's just not, we, it's just not the Rittner area. Don't you, don't you reach out farther?
We don't reach out farther because I'd be stepping on toes from, you know, my colleagues. We have like the U-City program that borders St. Louis City Parkway. And so I'm really not supposed to reach out to those areas.
But if they come to us?
We can definitely serve them, and we do. So I can serve anyone that comes to me that lives in the state of Missouri. They don't need identification or anything like that. We take them at their word, so we do. But in the past, and I did not check the data this year, but in other years, it's been consistent that at least 75% of our students are from the Rittner School District area.
I just wanted to say something really quick first. So I was actually giving a ride to one of our students. I was dropping her off at school, and then I would drop off her grandma at a center. And she, Miss Sarah, she would be like, I have school today, like, I can't. I was like, Miss Sarah, we're going, you need breakfast? Like, let's go. So just wanted to say how excited I saw a student, an adult learner, be and how committed she was. I mean, Miss Sarah was ten toes down. She was like, this is, I'm doing this thing.
She meant it.
Yeah, she meant it, and I just, I love that. And secondly, I just really wanted to commend you and give you your, your flowers, your kudos because I always, I just enjoy, I look forward to your presentation every year. I've only been on the board, I've been here the least, and I just, I find that not only are you always presenting us with increased performance and increasing your goals, but I think your program is such an example of what we hope to be as a district, which is responsive, adaptive, agile, and really emergent with what is happening with the students. And that can be really hard, I mean, you know, we know that, but if every classroom, if every teacher had that mindset of how can I be responsive to what's happening right now, I think we would see even more success than we're already seeing. And so I just really wanted to commend you for that. That's my perspective, and that's my, my view of this program. And so just really wanted to commend you and your leadership in how you run this program. So, thank you.
Thank you. We always want to do better, you know? Whatever we're doing, it's never enough. We must do more, we must do better. And right now, the big, the big adaptation that we need to make, if we're going to be a truly socially equitable program, we need to respond in the community, and that's serving our English language learners better. And I appreciate all the support we did for that.
Think you could see, you've got support here.
I do, I can.
It was, it was great to meet your daughter. She's really an awesome person.
She loves you.
I look forward to seeing what she does.
She can't wait to drive her Mustang.
Got a full tank of gas, we're ready to go.
I'll let her know.
Karen, thank you so much.
Thank you.
So now... 3.4?
Yeah, so board members, we're at a second reading of policy EHBD. We had our first reading last week, looking for a second reading and approval of EHBD, which has to do with creating some guardrails for AI. So there's two components to it. There is the policy, and then there is the plan. So I'm just going to speak at a high level about the policy, which is a new policy from MSBA. Presents, AI creates issues and opportunities. It sets forth the governing framework for creating comprehensive district AI use. This is the introduction from MSBA up at the top. Students and employees may be disciplined, and employees may be terminated for AI use that violates the policy or any related policy or procedure. And so it starts off with the definitions. Artificial intelligence is any hardware or software capable of adapting output or performance by applying by applying probabilistic algorithms for input. One example of AI we actually saw tonight in Fortuna's presentation. We had Mr. Lindhorst speaking and giving information and it wasn't actually Mr. Lindhorst sharing the content. Fortuna also talked about, I'm able to change the tone of the voice to try to match someone else, another example of AI. For purposes of the policy, any product or service that contains or uses AI is marketed as AI or is marketed as using any kind of AI that will be defined as AI when the component is used. The big component of the policy is the identification of the AI coordinator, who will have the chief responsibility for regulating, monitoring and adjusting AI use in the district and developing our AI use plan, which is the attachment. The coordinator may consult with experts or others outside of the district but may share critical and confidential data only under appropriate confidentiality and non-disclosure agreements. The AI coordinator would be our incoming director of IT, Dr. Rich Wilson. The AI coordinator must be knowledgeable of the contents of the privacy policies of all AI products used in the district, including any relevant changes to the policy. There must be an annual review of AI use at least one time during the year. The AI coordinator will review the district AI use for safety, privacy appropriateness and effectiveness and make appropriate changes. There will also be an update to the parents once per year with a summary of AI use in the district, including any significant changes to the AI use plan. Now specifics in the attachment, which is listed as AP, that will be our regulation. A couple of specific set-asides. What is prohibited is inputting confidential data, data into AI because it is possible for that data to be captured. The data is governed by FERPA. It is not appropriate to use AI for classwork. Students very much know what ChatGPT is and a number of other tools out there. We're very interested in students' general authentic work product. It is prohibited to represent AI content as our, as one-zone work and inappropriate to use AI to disseminate info on important matters or matters of public concern. So AI can be used as a research tool to gain information and gain knowledge, but people are accountable for generating their own work product. Board members, I will tell you that in this district right now, there are not a lot of AI issues that get to my level. This policy is our approach, our attempt at trying to be proactive, knowing that AI becomes, as it becomes a greater and greater part of our work, we're going to have to be agile around this policy. And if you approve, we'll be calling on our director of IT to keep us in the loop.
I just wanted to make one note that I think it's important to have these in place because students, depending upon where they go and if they go to college, there will be repercussions if they use it on a political level to where there's no questions asked and they are literally kicked out of school like next day. So it's good to have everybody in the base kind of understand a starting point.
So, um, I'm reading through the AP and I just want to make sure, like, if something is done, is this fun? If something is done on written or devices? Or like say somebody posts something out on social media about another student or a staff member on their own? Are we taking action on those?
So we have confidentiality pieces to start with, right? And so we're able to take action if our device is used. If there is harassment that is taking place outside of our devices and it has an impact on the good order of the day, we're able to take action on that as well. You know, those kinds of things, harassment can come a couple of different ways. Like is confidential data being input into some device like ChatGPT to create some kind of AI device threat or harassment? Or is it just somebody harassing somebody else and using our device or their own device to do it? There's a couple of different policies still addressed.
I'd like to make a motion to that policy EHBD and EHBD-AP as read, Board of Education. Second.
Motion and second. Are there any other questions about these policies? Here you go. Call the, Mr. Kirk? Mr. Kirk?
Yes.
Dr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez-Picula?
Yes.
Ms. Glover-Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Melos?
Yes.
I vote yes. Now, three point five is our budget here. To that, we call our chief financial officer, Dwight Leonard.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Happy to present the 2025 proposed budget tonight. Of course, when we start developing the budget, we keep our vision, our mission, our equity statement and our students in mind as we develop the budget on allocating resources. And as far as the equity statement goes, that is the key statement in there for the business office that resources are allocated so that every student gets what they need. First off, the enrollment projections, wanted to show you that we do these every year and right now they're showing pretty stable future enrollment. We do that on our cohort survival method. So it's how many of this year's first graders become next year's second graders and so on. Obviously, there's, it's not an exact science. And the real hard one is kindergarten. It's based on live births five years ago. And so again, there is some proportion, but it's not, again, it's not an exact science. But so far, it looks pretty stable. And as you know, the district has been staying a little bit last quite, quite a few years now. I want to start with revenues and as we look at state aid, you can see I'm expecting weighted average daily attendance, so eighty-eight, to increase a little bit, but the real driver of the formula is the SAT or State Adequacy Target. It's going from six thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars this year to six thousand seven hundred and sixty. So that is great. It provides a lot of, a lot more funding for us. You can see about three point seven million. Again, that's great as long as the state can afford it and fully fund it. We look at two different, two other state aids, transportation. You can see what we expect to get this year over one point five million. Next year, I'm being conservative and only budgeting six hundred thousand. Most experts on state finances do not believe that the state can fully fund that formula and keep fully funding the transportation formula. And at the end of seven twenty-seven, the way it got passed, one of the things was to take out the provision that related to charter schools, that the, that those tax credits would end as long as the transportation formula was fully funded. That got taken out. So that's how everything got passed under compromise. So I expect it to be less and no, no one has given us guidance on how much less or whatever anyone is expecting. This was my gut estimate. State sales tax prophecy has been going up every year in the past five or six years despite the pandemic, which has been a crazy, crazy thing, but it's been great. And they anticipate it going up in, in IDU too. So budgeting for increase about the same ADA again, but increased state sales tax per student. When we look at local revenue, tax revenue, this is not, twenty twenty-four is an even year, so it is not a reassessment year. So the only changes will be small new construction as well as anybody still processing their taxes that could decrease it. But looking at basically the same amount, two hundred and thirty-six thousand dollar increase. Prior year taxes this year has fallen, the collection rate has fallen compared to what we've seen the last few years. So I'm hoping that the collection rate goes back up as we've seen. And then M and M merchants and manufacturers, certex, again, it has been going up and went higher than we've ever had this year, which is good. I stay conservative and budgeted the one point six million we have then. But as I said last week, I think Dr. Busta Terry's going to be able to start increasing those. And if you look at the future, the forecasted revenues in the budget, I started increasing those also. So I think, I think we'll see those stay higher, which is good. But right now, we're being conservative as we usually are. So all of that, about seventy-one thousand less in the budget. I think M and M will come in a little higher. But again, we'll have to see on prior year taxes whether our collections come back to where they would have been before this year. So when we start looking at the budget itself and the increases, we have added an early childhood teacher and an aide because we're going to have one more classroom at the school. That'll be normal, typically developing students and we'll be counting in our weighted ADA. We are adding one middle school math teacher. However, it's from a person that was a math interventionist this year, so it's not really an add, but I wanted to point it out. And then we are adding one bilingual therapist through a grant. As you know, we had salary increases of five point two five percent and the medical insurance for employees is going up about six percent. So as we look at the decreases, this is year one of the approved plan by the board to look at, start reducing positions through attrition. That is through retirement and through resignation. For those items that have been added with Esser funds, because as we know, they expire September thirtieth. So we have four extra elementary teachers that we had this year. They, those were used for class reduction. And as I explained last week, those were, Michael Chance and all of us were very concerned with a teacher shortage and we wanted to keep a few extra teachers because we thought we would have some losses over the summer. So it ended up we had four extra and during this time when we had Esser money, it was fine. But we've reduced those, those positions. One reading interventionist, one math interventionist, one middle school interventionist, two counselors, one ELL teacher, two ELLTAs, one TA in the district and then three safety support specialists, one dean of students. One that I missed last week was a Title I instructional coach, or an instructional coach that we charged, the Title I. And then through her staffing, Deanna Hill reduced one and point seven five FTEs on child nutrition kitchen helpers. So again, most, all of those, other than the Title I instructional coach and the kitchen helpers, were people, were positions that have been added in the last three years using Esser funds. And another decrease is Dr. LeChance, Dr. Kilbride and I recommend the following compensation changes. That, those would be effective October first with the, that coincides with the loss of Esser funds. You remember, we, we added the, we increased these when we got Esser money to try to counter the shortage of people working extra and duties that were hard to fill at the time, mostly summer school. So starting with the easy funds first, debt service fund is based principal and interest on our outstanding bonds. You can see that we're going to have a small deficit this year. Next year, a million dollar surplus. Again, that just depends on how those principal and interest payments are set up when we issue the bonds. But we're in great shape on debt service, the eighty-four cents tax levy. We'll fund these out till the expiration of bonds. And I said three to five years, Lorenzo Boyd at Steeple said that it's probably closer to three years from now, depending on assessed value, that, that the district could issue more bonds at that eighty-four cent tax rate with no, no increases on that rate. So that's good news because facilities always need updating, especially the infrastructure such as HVAC that is not thrilling for, for some. Bond issue fund, again, we have to spend that only on buildings and facilities. So looking like we're going to end the year about five point two million. And again, we plan on spending that all next year. As I said, you probably won't get it all spent by June thirtieth because those last projects will be going through the summer next year. But I wanted to show that we expect this to be gone very soon. By the end of next year or very soon thereafter. So when we look at the operating funds, again, that's the general teachers and the normal capital projects fund. This year expecting a surplus of about four point one million. Next year, a surplus of three hundred and sixty thousand. And, and ending balances of about thirty-eight percent, thirty-four million. That's very good. It's very comfortable and puts us in good fiscal condition. Now, if you look at the increase and decrease, that looks a little crazy, fourteen million to ten million. And that is mainly because we have the nine and a half million dollar EPA grant in the twenty-three, twenty-four budget and we don't have it in the twenty-four, twenty-five budget. So when we take, when I take that out of the current budget and you can see the decrease, the changes are more reasonable. So less expenditures, but much less revenue, which takes our surplus way down by three point seven million. Just wanted to make sure that, that people can see we're comparing apples to apples. This one is with three point eight million Esser three revenue. I said the twenty-three, twenty-four, that's not true. That is twenty-four, twenty-five. Sorry about that. So we have eleven million budgeted, eleven point eight million budgeted in twenty-three, twenty-four. And actually, I just requested that today. And four point eight, four million in twenty-four, twenty-five. I'm sorry, that is an extra three point eight million. We had eight million budgeted originally and now we've budgeted eleven point eight in twenty-three, twenty-four. I apologize. So you can see that that's going to take us up to closer to a seven point nine million surplus just based on the timing of the payments that we received, the Esser funds.
Is that three point eight that we have to use by September thirtieth?
So that, the eleven point eight we've already spent, which is why I could request that this year. There is four million dollars in twenty-four, twenty-five. Our allocation is fifteen point eight. So I've requested eleven point eight. We should get that by June thirtieth, June twenty-eighth. And then there is four million dollars in twenty-four, twenty-five budgeted. The, the remaining four million.
But that's?
And that has to be spent by September thirtieth. We have some ongoing capital projects, but also we can charge salaries and benefits. And so, yeah, we'll get all that, we'll have all that spent and requested to get that in September or October. You have to request it by September, September thirtieth or around there. And, and receive it by- And, and receive by end of October. But what I want to point out is that if we did not have four million dollars in the twenty four, twenty five operating budget of Esser three, we would have a three point seven million dollar, three point six million dollar operating deficit. Okay, so the only reason we don't have an operating deficit is because we have four million dollars in Esser funds still going to come in next year. This shows those operating funds, again, the budget of twenty four and twenty five, and then forecast for the next three years. You can see that in twenty twenty six, when we had no Esser funds, it's showing almost a two point four million dollar operating deficit. So just some final thoughts I'll, I'll leave you with. You know, the fund balance again, at the end of twenty three, twenty four will be three point million dollars higher. But we have a deficit next year without four million in Esser three revenue. What's good is we have sufficient balances to absorb small to medium operating deficits in the future, in the next forty five years. We're in our first year of the five year plan that the board approved. And I would encourage you to stick with that. Even though we got sixteen or seventeen net positions this year, you, you cannot guarantee that you'll have that every year. You might only get three or four next year. Because we know that we don't want to lay off anyone. You have to take advantage of vacancies when they come up. Obviously, if we need four sections of fourth grade at a school for ninety students, we don't want to, and, and a fourth grade teacher retires or resigns. You can't necessarily eliminate that position because you certainly don't want thirty students in class for fourth grade. So you have to take those positions that you can, when you can, because you're not going to be able to take every open position. And the last thing I want to say is that these reductions will help keep Rittner competitive in salaries and benefits. That is one thing we've been able to do the last three years, utilizing Esser funds and, and having good fiscal management. But I encourage you to keep following your plan. It's going to be hard at times. But I think the district's long term sustainability depends on reducing those positions and getting to where you can have operating, you know, balanced or operating surpluses without those federal funds available.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
In your forecast, are you forecasting those reductions? Or is that not forecasted?
Those are not forecasted.
Okay.
So that's why, that's why we're showing a two point four million dollar deficit in twenty six, okay? I have increased all salaries and benefits, all the expenditures by a little bit. But I've also looked at revenues and increased those too. So those are, they're, they're both forecasted. All of the, all of the expenditures are only up about two percent. So that's not where we want to be anyway. So that's why it's going to be key to eliminate those positions. As you know, seventy eight percent of our operating budget is salaries and benefits. It is people, we are people. And you have to, in order to save a lot of money, you have to look at salaries and benefits, unfortunately.
I just wanted to make sure that that was.
Right.
Not forecasted with that in place.
Correct. Okay, at this time, we're supposed to have our budget hearing for the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five fiscal year budget. Follow the script. There's a three minute time limit for all the individuals here. And a thirty minute time limit for the hearing in its entirety. The hearing is now open. Anyone who wants to talk about our budget, ask questions. If anybody from our, our gallery, our vast audience. Phil, if you have any questions, feel free, part of our audience. No questions.
One of the questions that I have, actually a couple of them. I know we have to do the positions, I totally get that. But I do have to also reflect upon when we're getting consent agenda items, specifically plans, action plans that are outlining to have additional social workers and that's going to address the areas of concern. So what have we done as administrators to help our principals and staff understand that your action plan here, that you're suggesting is something that we're not going to be able to do for the next five years?
So the, yeah, and the answer to that is, you know, those evaluations come from the committee. And we've been, with the S E L teams, we've actually met with them in person and talked about how the, the reductions are going to impact all of the departments. We also don't want those to not come to the board. So you can see what committees are actually asking for, but there's a gap. And, and we've been trying to be as transparent as possible to say, you know, not only are we not looking to add, we're going to have to make some reductions. And then that creates a conversation. So Dr. LeChance and I have met with the elementary group, the middle group, and then the high school group. We don't want to block the board from hearing what people are asking for. And, and we'll continue to allow that to pass through. But it's created a bunch of conversations where we say, this is a part of, this is a part of the plan. And it's kind of the O E B factor where, yes, this is absolutely happening now. Because we also see that it's, it's about for some, it's about more and more and more. And because the work is hard right now. And we're just trying to be as transparent as we can about the gap. It's just not going to be recommended at this point.
Yeah, and I'm not saying that question because I want you all to hide information from us by any means. I'm not saying that, I just wanted us to understand, like, I hear what we're saying. But if I'm in a building, if I'm in a space, are we doing that full assessment to make sure, like, if they're asking for these things, there may be a reason. I mean, I see here the E L teachers, the E L T A's. But we even see that at our adult ed level. And we know when we look at the population in our district, we're going to see a greater need in those spaces. So I do think that as we continually do this work, there has to be some level of balance. And I know Dwight, you're on your, this is your last meeting with us. But as we bring in individuals, there has to be some level of creativity in this space because we know that there's going to be some gaps as we are making some of these cuts in these spaces. And I, I get it, the numbers can't make them add up. Well, the, the math is not mathing, I get that, right? But we do know that there's going to be some gaps in our district for our population and for our students and families that we service.
Kind of feel like to your point, that we also, it would be good to have in those reports of, you know, this what they did is what we need, but here's what we're doing because we don't have that. You know what I'm trying to say?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I think we kind of talked about that previously, like, you know, when, I've, I've always asked this question. When somebody's not doing that work, who's doing it? Because the work doesn't typically go away unless you kind of reallocate them or your process has changed your standards. So now who's doing that work and how, what's the trickle down effect of that person taking on more and this low potentially? I'm not saying that that's happening, but if that's a potential, like, where's that gap at now?
I think the, the stop, start, continue strategy is something that we use sparingly in the district. There are some things that we do in the district because we've always done them. I think one strategy is to be more purposeful around stop, start, continue. Because there are some things that we should be stopping in this district because they're not supporting student academic, social, emotional development. There are some things that we need to start. And so I just think we can be more purposeful around that specific strategy. Because there are departments that use that on a pretty regular basis, but it's not consistent across the district. And that, that might be the addition that would make some sense.
I know to your point, I read the, the evaluation for Farming Arts. Which we've always fully supported, grown, pushed to see how it could grow. And some of their recommendations come back to saying, we need a position for this. We're growing, we had over a hundred children at Rittner Middle, for example, and banned from there. They started out with a hundred and six and they kept just following. We need space, we need people, we need time. One of the recommendations was a position that we did have. And now we don't have, and as we grow our finance program, the stage manager because of scheduling and those things. So I, I read, I read those as well. I want to say, hey, this makes sense. We need to do this. I don't, I don't know if the answer has to be completely known, but it has to be a very purposeful and strategic, okay, we do. So, yeah, we, we have the goal, we've got a work plan. But at the same time, having, you know, three, four, five balls up in the air, trying to balance all these things, we do have to look at these plans. We do have to look at where are our priorities? Where do we want to put our priorities for this or that? I think maybe that's a conversation we can have. And, and look at these evaluations off of the consent agenda. And dig down into them, see what their recommendations are and see what we can support and what we can't plan on supporting later on. So I'll give a very practical answer. First of all, a budget, all it is is a set of priorities. That's exactly what a budget does, is set your priorities. For me, I look back at when we first got the Esser funds and we said, this is going to be temporary money for temporary positions to help support students after the pandemic and the learning loss caused by the pandemic. So for me, it was always going to be temporary. After three to four years, I think it gets, becomes for many people more permanent, right? So I think it goes back to, we added sixty three positions. And the bottom line is, is we added sixty three positions with twenty four million dollars that we never had before and we're not going to have again. So, and I don't think it is unique to a school district or education in general. Or, I mean, there's other, there's companies that don't have the revenue they have either and they, and they make cuts and what happens? Somebody has to pick up that. But for us, it's more about, we're just getting back to the staffing that we had before the pandemic. Now, are there more needs? Maybe. But generally, we're getting back to the staffing we had back then. And not really because your plan is to approve, to eliminate, reduce, not eliminate, reduce fifty positions over five years, five years. But we added sixty three, so we're not even talking about getting rid of all of that. So I just think that, but in general, it's, yes, when you, when somebody else, when somebody leaves, everybody else has to pick up the slack. So that's just very practical for me. That doesn't mean it's right or anyone likes it. Ladies and gentlemen, and board members, I, I think we could say this concludes our budget hearing. I don't know if there's anything else that has. Yes, ma'am.
Two quick questions from the gallery. And I promise that they're not planned in negotiations questions. Knowing that there's the financial reality that we have to work with and knowing that some of those sessions will, will happen in the CFO's office, some of those will happen in human resources. What supports are the, is the district planning on giving administrators? Because some of these conversations, many of these conversations about why we cannot do something or why this position is eliminated, those are going to be happening in assistant principals' offices. And we have a number of newer administrators coming in. Are there supports that we're already going to give them so that they're equipped to have those conversations in, in the very sort of empathetic ways that they can? Even though this is a really tough thing?
I can answer that question. So when the, when the, when the questions around positions have come up, we would go on the road. It would be Mike LeChance and I would go to the buildings to talk with the impacted groups or where the questions are come from, coming from. So I, I think we want to shelter, you called out assistant principals. We want to shelter them so that they are not in a situation that they're speaking on, that they don't completely understand. Like assistant principals and principals know that the strategy is at least ten reductions per year over the course of five years. Wanting to get a more global perspective around work groups and so on across the district, they don't have that information. So our strategy with building level people is to not punt, but to reach out for support so that Mike LeChance and I can go in and have the conversations.
Did you have a second one?
I did. I just worry about something that I used to know and I don't hope it's true anymore. In terms of grant writing, that's not a specific position that we have in the district anymore. But how does that, really my question is, how does that work on the central office level, particularly for some of those needs that might need to be met? How do we pursue those in our district at this time? And how do you think we might pursue them differently with the budget assistance?
Yeah, I have an answer, and then Dwight, if you want to jump in. This past year was the most prolific grant writing year that we've had in this district. About eleven million dollars in grants came into the district. When you add the nine point five for buses, when you add the DESI grant that Ms. Hahn wrote for, for, it's a three eighty, Ms. Hahn?
No, I told you about, close to five hundred thousand, right?
Okay, I did, right. So I don't want to.
Yes, that's right, that's right.
So that was two grants. Let, let it be known, it was not just one grant. At first, okay, Ms. Hahn, the first grant was for three eighty, or is that correct?
Three ninety nine.
Can you talk about the other grants you received too?
Okay, I received one for, that was that whatever that RC.
I S R G or something.
And then another one I got for, it was another position which paid for one of our bilingual therapists, so.
So we don't have a specific standalone grant writer, but we do have some very prolific grant writers in the district.
Yeah, Jennifer Singleton has gotten a grant the last two years. She's working on one right now. And I believe she'll, it looks like she's going to get that one too. So, yeah, it's generally administrators that, that do that. A grant writing position is generally, you bring them in and they are expected to hit, you know, a certain num, a certain multiple of their salary and benefits. But we have never, in the districts that I have been involved with, we have not had a professional grant writer. So I have, you know, thoughts about grants in that they are temporary. And so generally, in my experience, once you have a grant and that person, and, and usually it's for a person, nobody ever wants to end that program or that position. And so grants can be a double edged sword to a CFO because they are temporary and then somebody's going to want to keep it. Which I would say this twenty four million dollars in Esser funds is a perfect example. It's very hard to stop doing what you've been doing, even for a year, but especially three and a half or four years. Sometimes grants can be so small that they're not even worth, the hassle that you have to go through, they're, they're sometimes not even worth getting. They make everybody feel good. And I wouldn't say, I would say none, none that we have gotten have been that. I'll leave that, I'll leave that. And with that, I'm going to say that the public hearing regarding the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five fiscal year budget is now closed. And we'll look at a motion to approve our budget.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five proposed budget as presented to the Board of Education. Second.
Got a motion and a second. There are no other questions about this budget, we'll call the vote. Ms. Amy Kispin.
Yes.
Ms. Lisa Love Jones.
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Lonest?
Yes.
Mr. Garden?
Yes.
Dr. Alvin?
Yes.
And sir? Oh, a vote yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Don't call it. We're at 3.7, which is our end-of-the-year budget commitments. So this is a budget amendment that we've been doing, that the district has been passing every year. Basically, this makes sure that I can transfer budget amounts to different line items and even different funds in order to remain in compliance with state laws, the state budgetary law statute. And that's, that's really, it just gives me the authority to make some changes on the budget.
I'd like to offer the Chief Financial Officer and its treasurer with approval from the superintendent to make transfers and amendments as needed to comply with all applicable regulations, statutes, and generally accepted accounting principles as recommended.
Motion in a second. Call the vote. Dr. Alvin?
Yes.
Mr. Garden?
Yes.
Ms. Lonest?
Yes.
Ms. Glover-Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Henrikus Pimblett?
Yes.
And I shall vote yes. Thank you very much. Thank you. Don't call it. About 3.8, which is our auditor recommendation. Yeah, so every, we've been doing five-year contracts on our outside auditor. They're independent certified public accountants. I sent the, the number of auditing firms that have, that are auditing school districts have, has decreased in the area. There are a lot of, there's a lot of continuing education that auditors have to go through in order to do these audits, and it's gone down. I sent it out to three of the most widely known. We got two responses. Daniel Jones is our current, has been our current auditor for the last five years. Herbert Ekinbrekel do a lot of the school district audits in the area also. You can see the wide range of fees. And because of the large difference in fees, I'm recommending that we stick with Daniel Jones at a five-year cost of $88,825 in fees.
So does this mean, like, we don't have to do this again for another five years?
Correct.
Okay.
Unless, for whatever reason, the district is not happy with Daniel Jones.
Right.
So it's really a one-year and four renewals. So you can, you can always switch. But if you use all five, they have to stick to these fees.
I'll make a motion to approve Daniel Jones and Associates to provide audit services for the next five years at a total cost of $88,825.
Motion in a second. Are there any questions? Hearing that, call the vote. Ms. Lonest?
Yes.
Ms. Glover-Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Henrikus Pimblett?
Yes.
Dr. Alvin?
Yes.
Mr. Garden?
Yes.
I shall, shall vote yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, can I go?
Yes.
Because I'm afraid if I stay here. I'm afraid if I stay here.
And you forgot to appoint you for the next one?
No.
The chair could take the motion, but you wouldn't like it. Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. 3.9 is the appointment of the Board, of the Board of Education Treasurer. Annually, the Board of Education appoints a treasurer. A member of the board of staff may fill this position. And it is a recommendation that we...
Board members were recommending that the board appoint Dr. Philip Pousatieri as treasurer to the Rittner Board of Education for the 24-25 school year. This will be effective when Phil starts his service, which is July 1.
Shall move. Second?
Can we vote? Ms. Henrikus Pimblett?
Yes.
Ms. Glover-Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Lonest?
Yes.
Mr. Garden?
Yes.
Dr. Alvin?
Yes.
I shall vote yes, sir.
I'm sorry.
Awesome. Next thing is, we have to appoint a Board of Education Secretary.
The board members were recommending Ms. Dequinda Woods to serve in the role as Secretary to the Board of Education for the 24-25 school.
Shall move. Second?
I shall vote. Dr. Alvin?
Yes.
Mr. Garden?
Yes.
Ms. Lonest?
Yes.
Ms. Glover-Jones?
Yes.
And Ms. Henrikus Pimblett?
Yes.
Oh, yes. You're back.
All right.
Next we go to 3.11, 311, and that should be personal recommendations. Yay. And Charles is here.
And Dr. Luchance. Just good to see you all.
Good to see you, sir.
And Dr. Luchance, this is regardless. He had a conference in Boston. And he is doing well. I do want to recognize him for some hard work this school year and this summer in our certified staff together. So he can have some great teachers and administrators. So, you know, it's him. I would like to recommend, and he's wanted for full approval. Like I said, he has been working on getting his vacancies filled. So he had some additions today, so.
Are number four and 10 related?
Yes, they are. Another doc.
We're going to have 1 through 43, correct?
Correct.
I'd like to make a motion to approve personal recommendations 1 through 43 as presented. Second?
Motion in a second. Are there any other questions for Charles? We got to give you your money's worth, you know?
Yes.
Hearing that, we'll call the vote. Ms. Glover-Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Henrikus Pimblett?
Yes.
Ms. Lonest?
Yes.
Mr. Garden?
Yes.
Dr. Alvin?
Yes.
And Charles?
I'll vote yes.
Thank you very much for all your work. Mike tells me you work just as hard as everybody else down there, so.
I do. We have a strong, we start seeing, so.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Now, board members, we are to then, board member comments. And since I don't hear any right now, I got one that we might have, we might have missed in everything. And I would like to, to recognize our current IT guru, Dr. Fred Harland, for his service. As this also will be his last board meeting with us.
We don't like to harass you as much as we like to harass life because...
No, he'll turn our computers off.
Right.
Fred, thank you for all your work, all your dedication to our students, to our school and staff. You leave a good and long legacy with the things that you've done, and you've set our school district up as a whole for a great amount of success here in the future.
Appreciate that. Thank you very much.
It's been my pleasure.
You really did a wonderful job, us going one-to-one. That was just such a huge undertaking. And you guys, you and your team did such a good job for all that. So thank you.
I've been blessed with a great team.
So, great, we're going to spend some time together with Fred. We had an administrative get-together to recognize Dwight, Lisa Greenstein, as well as Fred Harland. Always appreciated Fred's style, his approach to leadership. Very humble, very unassuming, quiet leader. Always appreciated your style, Fred. Looking forward to staying connected.
I know that's hard to talk, but is anybody...
I was just going to say, I learned so much from the IT world, just kind of listening to you and then going back to work. And being like, no, uh-uh, this is what you need to do. It's called the whoppers and everything. I feel so educated, but it's because of me just kind of listening to you and look at the reports and the details that you provide. I, sometimes I tease IT people because they start speaking their lingo. But I think you do a great, have done a great job with just breaking things down for us, especially for me, to help me understand, like, okay, this is why this is important. So I appreciate all of that.
If there's nothing else?
I have one thing I wanted to bring up.
Okay.
So when I went to my SSD meeting, Mary Kay gave me a card. She works with the St. Louis Cardinals over the summer. And there is a program called A Greener Game. And it is interested in recycling. It's available to students within our district that can help do the recycling at the Cardinal game. It will give them a free Cardinal game that they can go to. And also, it will put them in the pool for a concert that's going to be there too, for Billy Joel. And so I wanted to pass this down because I think that's a wonderful opportunity for students.
Thank you.
Absolutely. I want to mention it.
Just to say about this, do you want to tell me about what's going to happen tomorrow?
Yeah, so board members, tomorrow morning, the UFL football championship is at the Dome this weekend. The Battle Hawks aren't in the game. It's a team from Birmingham and a team from San Antonio. And before each of these UFL championships, there's only been a couple because the league is somewhat new, they go to a local high school to focus on the local football team. And then they bring out some local celebrities to do some media coverage. And so tomorrow morning, 9:00 a.m., members of the St. Louis Battle Hawks are going to be out at Moore Field with members of the Husky football team. There's also going to be some local celebrities there. Evander Holyfield is going to be there because he's a part-owner of the group, as are some other unknown celebrity, unnamed celebrities. So 9:00 a.m. tomorrow, at Moore Field, we're going to be on the morning media cycle and possibly cycling out through the rest of the day. So it should be a great day at Moore Field.
I thought that was awesome. They had to say something out there. Okay, consent agenda items, 4.1 to 4.14.
I'd like to make a motion to approve consent agenda items, 4.01 through 4.14 as recommended.
Motion in a second. Call the vote. Dr. Alvin?
Yes.
Mr. Garden?
Yes.
Ms. Henrikus Pimblett?
Yes.
Ms. Glover-Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Lonest?
Yes.
I'll vote yes. We have our consent agenda items. Let's move on to 5.1, which is closed sessions.
I'd like, go ahead. I'd like to make a recommendation to reconvene a closed session for State Statute 610021 for a discussion of agenda items. Second?
Motion in a second. We'll call the vote. Mr. Garden?
Yes.
Dr. Alvin?
Yes.
Ms. Lonest?
Yes.
Ms. Glover-Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Henrikus Pimblett?
Yes.
Vote yes. Let's take a break. We'll come back in five minutes and we'll wrap it up.